Regular meeting number 57 will now come to order. Please stand for the play of the National Anthem. Councilmember Tyson, would you please lead us?
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is pleased to have Pastor Vincent Gordon Golden, I apologize, Senior Pastor Unity Baptist Church here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Let's pray. Our God our Father, we are grateful for this evening. We are grateful for this great city council. We pray now as business is discussed, Lord, that you have been in the midst. Thank you for this time. Thank you for this group. Thank you for this great city. Now, God, give us wisdom and understanding to know what you would have us to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with a reading of the Journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed in the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any resolutions by members of council? President Protem. Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Dorans.
No resolutions, but I do want to make one announcement to invite folks to the public hearing on the proposed area commission code changes. That hearing will take place next Monday. Since we don't have a council meeting, we'll be doing it here at 5:00 PM in council chambers. Also, we will be broadcast live by CTV and made available on the city's YouTube channel after the event. If folks are interested in those changes, please come out next Monday. Thanks to all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, favor.
Thank you, President Harden. No resolutions, but just two announcements. Applications for the Columbus Youth Council are now available. The Columbus Youth Council is a five-month program in which high school juniors and seniors from Columbus City schools will have the opportunity to immerse themselves in city government and learn how they can become stewards in their community. Students will also have the opportunity to join me on an educational trip to Washington, DC at the conclusion of the program. Interested students should speak with their principal or guidance counselors to receive an application or reach out to my office by emailing C E Newman, that's C E N E W M A N at columbus.gov. Applications are due by December 4th, 2019. And lastly, on December 10th at 4:30 PM, I will host a joint budget hearing of the Housing, Public Service, and Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committees. I encourage residents to join me at Driving Park Community Center to hear from the departments about their plans for 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one announcement, actually a couple of announcements. Let's not cut ourselves short. I will be hosting my final community hours for 2019 on Thursday, December 12th at Tim Horton's at 5221 North Hamilton Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43230, 12:30 to 2:00. So come out, let me treat you to a cup of coffee, some timbits, and tell me what's on your mind. Also, I'm holding a public hearing on budget hearings on my departments, which are Administration, Economic Development, and Civil Service, December 3rd, 5:00 to 6:00 PM. And we'll also be holding a public hearing in regards to some upcoming legislation on December 5th, Thursday, from 5:30 to 7:00. More on that information to come. I'd actually like to take a point of privilege to talk a little bit about what I'm thankful for this evening. And first and foremost, I'm very thankful for my family, my wife, who's a Columbus City School teacher, and my three children, who this fall didn't get to see me a whole lot. All Columbus City School elementary students. But also thankful for the opportunity to serve. And the opportunity to serve the 895,000 residents in the city of Columbus. It's a privilege to be sitting in this seat. It's a privilege to help make Columbus an even better place to live. And I'm very appreciative for that fact. And finally, I'd like to tell my colleagues how much I appreciate serving with them. And it's truly a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. And, you know, as I, we had a little discussion the other night at dinner and just thinking about, you know, what I'm thankful for this year, it's the opportunity to run with the people that I ran with this fall and the opportunity to serve with all of you. So thank you very much. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, I have one resolution, and I am going to ask Ms. Kathy Passion from the Life Care Alliance, from the Central Ohio Diabetes Association to come to the podium. And your guests can also come up with you if they choose to. And this is Resolution 319X, and it is to declare November as the National Diabetes Month in the city of Columbus and to express support for the National Diabetes Association's 2019 theme, "Take Diabetes to Heart: Linking Diabetes and Cardiovascular Disease." Whereas diabetes is a chronic illness that can lead to serious complications such as heart disease, stroke, kidney disease, blindness, and amputation. Approximately every 23 seconds, someone in the United States is diagnosed with diabetes, and nearly 30 million Americans have diabetes, including more than 1.3 million in Ohio. An estimated 86 million adults have prediabetes, a condition that places them at increased risk for developing type 2 diabetes and heart disease. And whereas the 2019 American Diabetes Association month theme is "Take Diabetes to Heart: Linking Diabetes and Cardiovascular Disease," it partners with the National Heart, Lung, and Blood Institute and the NIH, which focuses on the link between diabetes and cardiovascular disease, as adults with diabetes are nearly twice as likely to die from a heart disease or stroke as people without diabetes. And over time, high blood glucose from diabetes can damage blood vessels and the nerves that control the heart. The good news is that steps can be taken to manage diabetes, thereby lowering the chances of heart, disease, or stroke. And this year, the National Diabetes Association encourages people to stop smoking and using tobacco products, is also encouraging people to manage their A1C, blood pressure, and cholesterol levels, to develop healthy lifestyle habits, and to become physically active and learn ways to manage stress and to take medicines as prescribed by one's doctor. Diabetes also affects all walks of life. It takes a particular toll on the disadvantaged and people from minority communities. Columbus Public Health's Office of Assessment and Surveillance reports that in Franklin County, African-Americans are 2.6 times more likely than whites to die of diabetes. So, be it resolved by this council of the city of Columbus, if this council does hereby declare November as the National Diabetes Month in the city of Columbus and supports the National Diabetes Association's 2019 theme, "Take Diabetes to Heart: Linking Diabetes and Cardiovascular Disease," and further express its support for the Central Ohio Diabetes Association's efforts to raise awareness for the 200,000 Central Ohioans and millions of Americans living with diabetes. If there are no questions or comments, I move for adoption.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. And so Kathy, I'm going to give you the podium. I'm so happy that our health commissioner is here, Dr. Mashika Roberts. I know she'll have some comments to make. And then I also want you, Kathy, to introduce your guest. Thank you.
Thank you. President Harden, Councilmember Tyson, and all members of Columbus City Council, thank you so much for allowing the Central Ohio Diabetes Association to speak with you today. And thank you for your resolution in honor of National Diabetes Awareness Month. I'm Kathy Passion, the Director of the Central Ohio Diabetes Association. Our association has been helping people live well with the challenge of diabetes for six decades. Because of our merger with Life Care Alliance in 2017, we have greater resources than ever to support our mission to provide education to adults with type 2, as well as summer camp programming for children, especially those with type 1 diabetes. We're proud to say that all of the funding that the Central Ohio Diabetes Association receives stays in the Ohio communities that we serve to ensure that folks living here have access to the best diabetes education and support possible. Central Ohio Diabetes Association is the only community-based organization providing diabetes education and services, from a staff including a certified diabetes educator, nurses, social workers, and dieticians. Our camp program includes volunteer doctors from Nationwide Children's Hospital, as well as volunteer nurses, dietetic students, and former campers as counselors, all of whom love supporting our young campers in learning best practices for managing diabetes and living well. Central Ohio diabetes programs truly represent the entire community. As noted in your resolution, type 2 diabetes is an especially insidious problem in the minority communities. We are grateful to have Dr. Mashika Roberts with us today to address this issue, and thank you again for your recognition of National Diabetes Awareness Month.
Good evening, President Harden and Chair Tyson. As a physician and as your health commissioner, I know the impact diabetes has on the patient, as well as his or her loved ones, and the greater health of the community. But I've also seen and felt the personal side, too. My wonderful parents are both living with diabetes, and I have seen firsthand their struggles and challenges in managing this very complicated disease. We all probably know someone who has diabetes. In Franklin County, 11% of adults have been told by a healthcare professional that they have diabetes. Diabetes also is the sixth leading cause of death right here in Franklin County. And like many chronic health conditions, disparities exist. African-Americans have a slightly higher prevalence of diabetes than non-Hispanic whites, but blacks have a much higher rate of death from complications of diabetes than their white counterparts. Diabetes, like most chronic health conditions, is impacted by the social determinants of health. Access to fresh food, sidewalks and parks for physical activity, and access to healthcare all play a very important role in both having the disease as well as successfully managing the disease. Diabetes Awareness Month is important because we need to raise awareness of diabetes and ensure all people, all residents, have access to more and better choices for healthy living in order to avoid and control diabetes. Awareness, prevention, and addressing the underlying causes of this condition is what it means, and what it means to those living with and helping those who are helping individuals with this disease, is what we need to improve those living with diabetes in our community. Diabetes is a complicated disease, as I mentioned earlier, and there are so many contributing factors and a host of complications and challenges if it's not properly managed. We are fortunate to live and work in a community that gets it, to have someone like the Central Ohio Diabetes Association, which is committed to working with us and working on some of the upstream challenges and changes we need to improve right here in our community, not only to prevent the disease, but also other chronic diseases. So I thank you and I commend you for acknowledging and recognizing Diabetes Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. And now I'm honored to introduce Cassandra Freeland, a community volunteer with a very personal story of diabetes in her family.
Thank you, Council President Harden, Council Protem Brown, members of council. Thanks for offering this resolution in support of National Diabetes Awareness Month. Some of you may recognize me from my day job at the downtown special improvement districts or my involvement with Columbus City Schools, but this evening, I'm just here tonight as the mom of a son with type 1 diabetes. Type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disorder that's not caused by diet or exercise, and over 1 1/4 million people in the United States are living with it. According to the search study for diabetes in youth, type 1 diabetes increased 21% from 2001 to 2009 in people under the age of 19. Its prevalence is increasing in African-American and Hispanic youth. For many years, type 1 diabetes was known as juvenile diabetes because that's when it made its appearance. An estimated 85% of people living with type 1 right now in the United States, though, are adults. And I'm told in Europe that 30% of new diagnoses are in people over the age of 30, so that's changing. We don't track that information in the United States, so it's not possible to know, but I know a number of people diagnosed in their 40s. There is currently no cure for type 1 diabetes, so there's lots of research being conducted. People with type 1 diabetes are dependent on insulin to stay alive, and many struggle to afford it. In the spirit of awareness, I'd like to share the signs of type 1 diabetes with you. They include increased thirst and urination, unexplained bedwetting, fatigue, weight loss, hunger, nausea and vomiting, rapid breathing, fruity-smelling breath, and even loss of consciousness. And a simple finger stick can rule out type 1 diabetes if you're experiencing these symptoms. Finally, I'd like to express my thanks to the Columbus Recreation and Parks Department for lighting downtown blue in honor of Diabetes Awareness Month. Earlier this month, from November 1st to 14th, along with the Leveque Tower, who lit up blue also. Last year, a friend of mine who worked there had the lights in front of COSI lit blue. And so this year, I leached out to Heather Williams, who helped me with the Topiary Park movie series. And she not only lit the lights in front of COSI blue, but also both bridges, City Hall, and Bicentennial Park. So this is what it looked like when my son and I came down to see it, and it took my breath away, all of that blew. So that was impactful to me personally, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeland, for coming down and certainly sharing your story and showing the symptoms. So any of the individuals who may be listening to this or viewing the council meeting, if their children have any of these symptoms, will know, you know, can reach out.
Or adults.
Or adults to reach out. We're going to let's go with adults, too, but certainly to reach out to either the Central Ohio Diabetes Association, or they can reach out to even to Columbus Public Health. And so I thank you for coming and sharing your story. And again, I would like to ask for Dr. Roberts and also Ms. Passion to come and just share if an individual is viewing this, viewing the council meeting, how they can get in contact with you, and also you again, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. To reach the Central Ohio Diabetes Association, please call 614-884-4400, or you can look for our website at www-diabetesohio.org. Thank you.
Individuals viewing this who want more information from the Health Department can call 311, and they can connect to the services we offer at the Health Department. They can also go to our website, which is www-publichealth.columbus.gov.
And I have one announcement. The Health and Human Services 2020 budget hearing will be here in council chambers on December 3rd from 3:30 to 4:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Are there any comments by the elected officials, city attorney's office, treasurer, auditor? I think I saw Ms. BJ from the Clintonville Area Commission. Thank you for being a counsel this evening. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an item or ordinance on resolution on the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of title of 30-day legislation? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda?
Finance Committee ordinance is 2754-2937-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2938-2949 and 2950-2019. Public Safety Committee ordinance 2991-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no speakers on the first reading portion of our agenda. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinances to the record?
Finance Committee ordinance is 2808-2837-2859-2862-2869-2922-2978-3008-3022-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2939-2947-2948-2964-2019. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 2540-2985 and 2989-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 745-2019 and 2787-2805-2825-2828-2875-2987-2019. Technology Committee ordinance is 2762 and 2958-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2850-2851-2853 and 3044-2019. Housing Committee ordinance is 2988-3038-3039-3040-2019. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 2865-2909 and 2970-2019. Economic Development Committee Resolution 281X-2019, ordinance is 2517-2897-2900-3016-3017-3051-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no speakers for the, are seeing no speakers for the consent portion. May I have a motion to approve of these items designated as consent by voice? Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, with the exception of 2948, 3016, and 3017, on which I am abstaining.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Favor?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes, with the exception of 2970-2019, on which I am abstaining.
President Harden?
Yes, consent agenda passes with the notice of abstentions. The first committee to come before council, we will now go to the second reading, 30-day table legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. The committee is chaired by President Protem. President Protem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have three ordinances in finance tonight. First, Resolution 0307X-2019, to reaffirm the role of the Economic Stabilization Fund, or Rainy Day Fund, in allowing the city to maintain and continue basic services during an economic downturn, natural disaster, or catastrophe, and to establish as a goal a balance of $90 million in the fund by the end of 2024. Last week, we approved the transfer of $1 million into the Rainy Day Fund to meet our goal of having 80 million in the fund by 2020, one full year early. As stated in the title, with this resolution, we are officially setting a new goal for the Rainy Day Fund of $90 million by 2024. As responsible stewards of public dollars, the city has an obligation to plan for future economic uncertainty. By setting these funding goals for the Rainy Day Fund, we help ensure the city can sustain basic city services in the face of economic challenges in the future. Any comments or questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for pass, or move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Next, we have ordinance 2604-2019, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase Fairbanks Morse and Lane pump parts and repair service with Pent Airflow Technologies LLC, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from general budget reservation, BRPO 001107, to waive the provisions of competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. The Division of Sewerage and Drainage and the Division of Water are the primary users of these pump parts and repair services. The pumps are used during the wastewater treatment process. Only one bid was received through the competitive bidding process. The only bidder provided terms and conditions that conflicted with bid specifications. Because of this, negotiations were required and a bid waiver is necessary. Emergency action is being considered now to prevent delays in the repair of this equipment. Any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 3064-2019, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to execute those documents necessary to acquire fee simple title and lesser interests to real property identified as Delaware County Tax Parcels, 6002403017000, 6002403018000, 6002403019000, and 60031101001000, located on Dublin Road, Delaware County, Ohio, to authorize the expenditure of up to $6,100,000 within the water geo-bonds fund and to declare an emergency. The property being purchased through this ordinance is a former quarry and contains two reservoir areas. This purchase will provide DPU's Division of Water with a site adjacent to its planned fourth water plant that will serve as a potential reservoir for the disposal of water treatment residuals. These reservoirs will produce long-term cost savings for the city and ratepayers by reducing disposal costs. I want to thank DPU and their commitment to long-term planning and investments to ensure the city of Columbus continues to have a clean and safe water supply. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have in finance, President Harden, but I'd like to turn the committee over to Councilmember Tyson, who has two ordinances.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The first ordinance is 3005-2019, and I'm going to ask the board chair from the Greater Columbus Arts Council to please walk toward the podium. Chair Michael Bonjourno. And this ordinance is to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Inc., with the purpose of distributing admissions tax proceeds to provide funding for grants to artists and arts organizations that serve as a foundation for the city's profile as a vibrant, inclusive city, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure up to $6 million from the Creation, Innovation, and Inclusion Fund, and to declare an emergency. The Creation, Innovation, and Inclusion Fund greatly increases the number of grants available to artists, events, nonprofits, thus enabling them to explore their creativity. Funds will be used by the Greater Columbus Arts Council to distribute grants to artists and nonprofits contributing to the city's creative culture and opening the doors of the arts and culture for our residents. And now, Board Chair, I'm going to ask you to make some comments regarding this legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Council President Harden and Councilmembers Brown, Brown, favor Remy and Dorans. I'm Michael Bonjourno. I'm the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Greater Columbus Arts Council and Managing Principal and Design Director at AECOM, an architectural design firm here in Columbus. Thank you for having me here, and I am really excited to be here before you. I'm primarily here tonight to say thank you on behalf of the Greater Columbus Arts Council and the entire arts community. We are grateful for your belief in the power of the arts and, more importantly, for and, more importantly, for your persistence in the face of many challenges with regard to the arts. The funds generated by this five percent ticket fee and the ordinance you're voting on tonight are quite simply a game changer for our city. These newly dedicated dollars for arts and culture in Columbus will support critical operating for support for small and large organizations, festivals, arts and cultural events, programs, grants for artists, and support for cultural and sports facilities' capital needs. Your investment doesn't just mean we're better able to compete with peer cities for business tourism residents. While those things are all important, the bigger impact is on the families and children of Columbus and the employees and artists in the creative sector. These funds will do five major things for the citizens of Columbus. First, they are going to protect and sustain Columbus's arts and cultural sector and its economic impact. As of twenty fifteen, that was nearly half a billion dollars in economic activity and fifteen thousand associated jobs in Columbus. Second, it's going to address needed capital investment in nonprofit, public-serving facilities and keep these facilities safe and continually drawing visitors and providing education opportunities to the entire community. Third, they will provide vital funding for neighborhood projects and organizations from Summer Jam West and Two-by-Two Hip-Hop Festival in the Hilltop to the King Arts Complex's Summer Heritage Concert Series and Maroon Arts Group's Box Five in the King Lincoln Arts District, to funding for organizations serving the broader community such as the Latino Arts Festival, Arts for Humanity, and the Somali Community Association. These festivals, projects, and organizations are critical to making sure the arts are for all of us. Fourth, there's going to be an increase in education and outreach opportunities for children. This includes programs like Saturday Sore at the King Arts Complex in partnership with Ballet Met and the Columbus Museum of Arts, education program for every single fifth grader in our City of Columbus public school system. And finally, COSIZE Science Festival, which holds STEAM, and the "A" is important in that, activities in neighborhoods throughout Columbus. And finally, fifth, expanding free access for low-income individuals and families by supporting more free festivals, activities, and public art in neighborhoods across the city. On December tenth, at ten, by five-thirty PM, we will be holding our annual public forum at the Columbus State Community College's new Mitchell Hall Event Center, which is a project I've worked on, so I'm really, I hope everyone will be there for it. We'll be thanking the community for all their advocacy over the past several years and sharing more details about how these new funds will be invested in programs in the next year. We certainly hope all or many of you can join us. Again, on behalf of the Board and staff of the Greater Columbus Arts Council and the entire arts community, especially in this season of gratitude, thank you for this investment in our community, and thank you for your courageous leadership.
Are there any questions for Michael? Seeing none? Thank you. I think you've already really addressed the capital, but we, well, you can just stay, could you stand a little bit more? Because that's the next piece of legislation, and you can want to speak to that. But again, I appreciate the five areas of focus that these dollars will be supporting in our community. And I know that what we were, this body, I know, was concerned about, I think you've really addressed it, but these funds will support resources through an international artist exchange program, residency programs and workshops, as well as other new programs designed for arts nonprofits led by and primarily serving people of color. And so, we appreciate that, that all the different areas of concern or thoughts that we had as a body, that GCAC has certainly listened and are focusing on, as you mentioned, to protect and sustain the arts, as well as the capital investment, which is the next piece of legislation, supporting the arts in our neighborhoods, education and outreach, and also making sure that our community has an opportunity to be able to go to lots of events that are free for them, so they can participate in the arts. And so, if there are no other questions or comments from our body, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorance? Ms. Faber? Mr. Remy? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number three thousand seven dash two thousand and nineteen is to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into the contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council, GCAC, and the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority for the purpose of distributing the two thousand and nineteen admissions tax proceeds from the Facility Stabilization Fund for the purpose of infrastructure investment in Nationwide Arena, as well as other cultural arts, sports, and performance arts venues in the greater Columbus area, and to authorize the combined appropriation and expenditure up to three million dollars from the Facility Stabilization Fund and to declare an emergency. The Columbus City Council authorized establishment of the Facility Stabilization Fund pursuant to ordinance thirty-three seventy-nine dash two thousand and eighteen. This fund was created in order to provide for the necessary resources to maintain, first of all, the integral facility, which is the Nationwide Arena, as well as to invest in other cultural arts, sports, and performance arts venues in the greater Columbus area. Proceeds were made available via the enactment of the admission tax in the na-, to five percent tax on admissions to events in the Nationwide Arena. This tax is also estimated to yield approximately three million dollars. Of this amount of money, two, twenty percent, or up to six hundred thousand will be contracted with the Greater Columbus Arts Council for disbursement to outside organizations to invest in other cultural arts facilities, public arts, sports venues, and performance arts spaces. GCAC will establish a process for application and consideration of grant proposals. Are there any other comments that you want to make on this particular ordinance?
Just like to add, kind of building on what I said a little earlier, that was the importance of being able to provide safe and economically viable facilities in addition to the benefit of being able to provide additional services throughout the city that will represent diverse groups of individuals in the city. And so, we're really happy to be able to help with that.
Thank you. Any questions? And again, both of these ordinances really are important to our overall quality of life in this community. And that's what the arts do, enhance that quality of life. So, thank you for your leadership as the Board Chair and your ongoing leadership on this board. If there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage and ask for, and call for a voice vote.
Please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorance?
Yes.
Ms. Faber? Mr. Remy? Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, ordinance pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. Committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance in Public Safety Committee this evening. Ordinance two-seven fourteen twenty nineteen to authorize the Director of Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement with Bell Helicopter Textron, Inc. for the purchase of one Bell helicopter for the Division of Police to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of three million four hundred and four thousand fifty dollars from the Special Income Tax Debt Fund and to declare an emergency. I would, at this particular time, as Director Speaks, as I understand it, Lieutenant Jack Harris is present from the Aviation Unit. If he would come forward and speak to the issue regarding this purchase. Lieutenant?
And he dressed up just for this council.
Well, good evening. Director Speaks and I had a conversation about whether five PM was evening or, I'm sorry, evening or afternoon. I said afternoon, I lost, so. Evening for me is six o'clock. Well, thank you all so much for having me. I consider this a distinct honor and privilege to be before you today. And just had a quick little thing I wanted to share with you. So, since nineteen ninety-six, the Columbus Police Department helicopter unit's been flying turbine-powered MD five-hundred series helicopters to provide airborne law enforcement services to our community. Our helicopter patrol mission has proven to be a dynamic force multiplier in the detection and apprehension of criminals. However, the fleet of five helicopters and subsequent mission equipment are aging. In two thousand seventeen, the Aviation Section formed a helicopter research committee, which was tasked with preparing a ten-year plan with the goal of replacing our aging fleet of five helicopters. This plan would entail both the sale of helicopters in the current fleet and acquisition of new helicopters over a ten-year period of time. Our committee was focused upon finding a helicopter that would meet or surpass our current mission platform and a helicopter that would be the best economic value for the city. So, we were focused on performance and price. The committee considered all possible helicopter manufacturers, and in the end, our research conclusion came down to two helicopters as the most viable options commensurate with our mission requirements. The MD five-thirty-F, which we currently fly, and the Bell four-oh-seven GXI. Of the two, the Bell four-oh-seven GXI greatly surpassed the MD five-thirty-F in both performance and price. For example, the Bell four-oh-seven GXI had a higher gross weight of five thousand two hundred and fifty pounds. That's two thousand one hundred pounds more than the MD five-thirty-F. That just means it can carry a lot more stuff, which is good. Mission equipment's very heavy. The Bell four-oh-seven has longer fuel endurance or range and can hold more than twice the fuel of the MD five-thirty-F. The Bell four-oh-seven GXI has increased passenger seating. And this is important because the helicopter can really be used, this helicopter, as a true command and control platform where leaders can comfortably sit and make real-time decisions in critical incidents. Another thing it could do is it can haul multiple personnel to critical incidents as we need. We could do it now, but we would have to do it two at a time, and we're weight limited on what we can do with the five-thirty-F. This helicopter is capable of hoist operations, which opens the door for future missions and working with maybe fire department, things like that. The Bell annual price increase, and they all increase every year, is three percent, and the MD five-thirty-F is at five percent. For resale, the Bell four-oh-seven GXI holds its residual value close to one hundred percent, according to Bell and our research, at five to eight years versus fifty-five percent on the MD five-thirty-F. So, we're getting a little better bang at the end when we go to resell them. The Bell four-oh-seven GXI purchase price was three hundred thousand dollars cheaper than the MD five-thirty-F this go-around. So, thank you, sir. I was going to say that. The plan over the next ten years will integrate the lighter-duty Bell five-oh-five, which is comparable to the MD five-thirty-F. So, over ten years, we're looking at two Bell four-oh-seven GXI helicopters and three Bell five-oh-five helicopters. Beginning in two thousand twenty-one, each new helicopter from Bell would be purchased with a completely new mission suite. And a mission suite is a tactical moving map, which tactical moving maps are extremely important in the helicopter as it reduces response time, gets us there quicker, a FLIR camera system with recording capability, and a new searchlight. Some of the searchlights we have are almost as old as I am, and I'm not going to talk about that. So, by switching from MD to Bell, the city would save over a ten-year period an estimated six point four million dollars. Lastly, in addition to price, I would note that Director Speaks was able to negotiate better terms and conditions of the contract with Bell than he was able to with MD. So, in closing, we are strongly recommending the Bell four-oh-seven GXI for purchase. We believe it is the best helicopter for our community, along with the five-oh-five down the road. And it's for your consideration. Thank you.
Director Speaks, do you have anything you wish to add, sir?
No, that was well done. I would simply iterate that this new helicopter and changing the new manufacturer will not only, as Lieutenant said, increase our mission capability over a ten-year replacement cycle, saving six point four million dollars, and we receive better terms and conditions. I'd like to thank Lieutenant and his committee for all of their work, which was very significant.
Yes, Councilman Remy?
Sure. Lieutenant, how long does it take to take delivery of the helicopter?
Typically, this company is really good. They've actually given us a projected date of July of two thousand twenty, which is amazing. With MD, from the date contract is signed, we're looking at fourteen to sixteen months. So, that would just totally throw our plan clear out of the water.
Lieutenant, also, the helicopter that you're proposing has all the same equipment, forward-looking infrared, and all those other pieces of nice toys that you guys like to have?
It will have, but unfortunately, some of the equipment will be old this time. But I'm working on grant money and seizure fund money to try to equip that with new equipment.
If there are no further questions, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Lieutenant, thank you, and thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Happy, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. chaired by Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. First, we have ordinance number two-seven-three-zero dash twenty nineteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Dan Burke, Inc. for the Valley View Drive Area Waterline Improvement Project in the amount of up to three million two hundred and forty thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents to encumber funds with the Department of Public Service, Design and Construction Division for Pervailing Wage Services in the amount of up to two thousand dollars to authorize the appropriation and transfer of up to three million two hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund to authorize the appropriation expenditure of up to three million two hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty cents from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund to authorize an expenditure of up to two thousand dollars within the General Water or General Obligation Voted Bond Fund to authorize a transfer and expenditure of up to eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to authorize an amendment to the twenty nineteen capital improvements budget. The goal of this project is to replace or rehabilitate the existing water lines that have high break frequency in the greater Hilltop Planning Area. The replacement of these water lines will improve water service in that area and decrease the burden on water maintenance operations and reduce water costs. The Department of Public Service will also be contributing funds to provide an additional pavement resurfacing as part of this project. So, thank you, Director Gallagher. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance number two-eight-zero-one dash twenty nineteen to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification of the Professional Construction Management Two Services Agreement with AECOM Technical Services for the Division of Water to authorize the transfer and expenditure of up to three million nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund and to authorize an amendment to the twenty nineteen capital improvement budget. Work performed to date includes design, phase construction management services for multiple capital improvement projects within the department, all of which are related to drinking water supply and treatment systems and necessary to meet regulatory requirements, improve the reliability of the city's drinking water supply, and enhance worker and public safety. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance number two-eight-three-zero dash twenty nineteen to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Division of Water to authorize an expenditure of two million one hundred thousand dollars from the Water Operating Fund. Drinking water is obviously important, but without, but can be subject to contamination and requires appropriate treatment to remove disease-causing agents. Public drinking water systems use various methods of water treatment to provide for safe drinking water for our community. The treatments purchased through this ordinance will help the department do just that. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden. Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance number 3020-2019 to authorize the City Auditor to transfer $1,100,000 between object classes within the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund Budget to allow for the payment of internal bills and charges associated with the Division's service contracts and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows for the payment of internal bills and charges associated with the Division's service contracts, in particular, the quarterly bill for the Columbus Utility Building System, or Cubs, which has been, has increased above the original budget estimates. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
May I move on to the Technology Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance number 2788-2019 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to enter into a two-year contract with options to renew for two additional one-year terms with CDW Government LLC to provide for the purchase of VMware catalog-listed items for the City of Columbus Information Technology Infrastructure Services to authorize the expenditure of $1,137,273.62 for the purchase of VMware software and support to implement a project to modernize the city's computer infrastructure from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Information Services Capital Improvement Fund, and to declare emergency. The Department of Technology is modernizing the city's computer infrastructure. This contract agreement will optimize the city's ability to purchase VMware software and, which will support this modernization effort. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the what? Row?
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. May I move on to rules and reference?
Please.
Thank you. These next three ordinances are the proposed utility rate adjustments for 2020. All three of these were on first read at our last council meeting on November 19th, and the Public Utilities Committee held a public hearing last Thursday here in council chambers to present the proposed rates. The Sewer and Water Advisory Board met on October 23rd, 2019, and after reviewing the Department of Public Utilities' projected expenditures for fiscal year 2020, recommended to City Council a 3% increase in sanitary sewer rates, water rates of 3%, and storm sewer rates of 2%. These rates will go into effect on January 1st, 2020. The approximately 3% across-the-board rate adjustment is in line with past increases and allows the department to continue to provide excellent customer service in environmentally friendly manner to more than 1.2 million people by investing in neighborhoods, by setting aside more than $30 million for rehab and replacement of water lines all across the city, investing in critical infrastructure improvements at water and treatment plants to meet the expected increase in central office population in the decades to come. These improvements will allow for economic development around our region, not just here in Columbus. This also pays down debt service in a responsible and timely manner that saves the ratepayers during the course of the loan. We've also been able to budget for 10 new customer service reps to handle customer calls to reduce wait times over the phone. We recognize that water and sewer charges disproportionately affect lower income groups. The Department of Public Utilities will continue to offer the low-income discount program that discounts participants' sewer commodity portion of their quarterly bill by 20%. A new payment relief program for the City of Columbus power customers offers a one-time credit of up to $150 to go towards an eligible residential electric bill. Customers who participate in assistance programs such as HEEP, Medicaid, food stamps, or live in public housing may be eligible for a discount on their water and sewer bills. Also, seniors aged 60 and older with limited income may also qualify for a discount on these bills. You can learn more by visiting Department of Public Utilities website at columbus.gov/utilities. So, without further ado, the first ordinance is 2979-2019 to amend various sections of Chapter 1105 of the Columbus City Codes and to enact new water rates for the year beginning January 1, 2019 and repeal the existing sections being amended. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? 2020, I apologize. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 2983-2019 to amend the Section 1147.11 of the Columbus City Codes to enact new sanitary sewer rates for the year beginning January 1, 2020 and to repeal the existing sections being amended. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And lastly, we have ordinance number 2984-2019 to amend Section 1149.11 of the Columbus City Codes to enact new storm water fees for the year beginning January 1, 2020 and to repeal the existing section being amended. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And with that, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before the council is the Housing Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Housing, we have ordinance number 3026-2019 to authorize the appropriation of $1,799,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Land Management Fund to the Department of Development to provide funds for the administration of the Land Redevelopment Division for budget year 2020 and to declare an emergency. This ordinance supports the city's land bank for the year 2020. At this time, I'd like to ask Director Michael Stevens to give us an update on the city's land bank as it stands today. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair of Favor, members of council. As we all know, the land bank is an important tool as we work to remove blight and stabilize our communities to really encourage more investment and limit the amount of criminal activity. Since 2012, 368 parcels have been acquired by residents through our side yard and improved to own programs, which provide the opportunity for neighbors to purchase adjacent lots through a combination of sweat equity and traditional financing options. The land bank has sold 1,600 parcels, and slightly over, and slightly over half have been rehabilitated residential structures. The land bank also demolishes properties to focus on that blight. What we've got to keep in mind is there's times when unfortunately those properties, as we acquire them, are beyond rehabilitation, and the cost to salvage those do not work. So, when we do that, we have opportunities to make community gardens, new residential development on those sites, as well as other affordable housing options for our affordable housing partners. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Stevens. Just a few. How can residents get involved in purchasing land bank properties?
We encourage our residents to do that. The easiest way is to call our land bank office at 614-645-5263. We do have a process. We want our residents to be set up to succeed if they're going to purchase this, one of our land bank properties. It's nothing more frustrating to the neighborhood where that property exists if we continue to turn that over and don't have a successful situation. We do have a process for them to go through, and I mentioned earlier the program where they have the ability to put some sweat equity into that as well.
And there is a website that residents can check out to see what properties are currently on the market?
Yes, there is. As we prep for today, we had a very long URL I will not read, but if you go to columbus.gov in the Development Department, you can access that website that has all of those sites that are available.
Wonderful. In the coming months, my office will be holding hearings within the community to talk more about the land bank and to continue to develop strategies on getting more residents involved in the process to help eliminate blight in our community. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance number 2877-2019 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with McDaniel's Construction Corp., Inc. and DE Development Limited for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years in consideration of a total proposed capital expenditure of approximately $1 million and the creation of two net full-time permanent positions. The need exists to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with McDaniel's Construction Corp., Inc. and DE Development Limited. Incorporated in 1985, McDaniel's Construction Corp., Inc. is an equipment-intensive, heavy infrastructure contractor that undertakes construction projects of various sizes and types. The main lines of business of McDaniel's Construction include general contractors, MWBE general contractors, MWBE paving and road construction, pavement treatments, coatings and sealants, and paving contractors. The company's customers are comprised of governmental agencies, corporations, municipalities, general contractors, and the private sector. DE Development Limited is a real estate holding company owned by Dan Moncrief and Eric Gerard, the Chairman, CEO, and President of McDonald's Construction respectively. McDaniel's Construction and DE Development Limited are proposing to invest a total project cost of approximately $1 million, which includes 800,000 in real property improvements and 200,000 in furniture and fixtures to construct a new corporate headquarters consisting of approximately 6,000 square feet at 1069 Woodland Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, 43219. The Department of Development recommends a 75% 10-year enterprise zone tax abatement on real property improvements. The Columbus City School Board of Education has been advised of the project. Director, do you have any comments in relation to this ordinance?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council. I appreciate the consideration for this ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much. I'd like to invite Jerry D. Large, General Manager of Bell Optical Lab and Essler Company, and Essler Lab, to the podium as I introduce ordinance number 2898-2019 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a job creation tax credit agreement of 50% for a period of six consecutive years with Essler of America, Inc. and Essler Laboratories of America, Inc. in consideration of the company's total proposed capital investment of approximately $24.2 million in the creation of 118 net new full-time permanent positions. Essler of America was founded in 1985, and Essler Laboratories of America, founded in 1972, is one of the leading providers of eyeglass lenses in the United States and has been operational for more than 150 years. Essler is a manufacturer and wholesale distributor of optical lenses that specialize in ophthalmic lens production and wholesale optical laboratory operations. The company produces a range of technically advanced lenses such as Essler's Verilux, Grisel, Thenon Light, Airware, and Transitions. The company operates a network of independent laboratories that serve opticians, optometrists, and ophthalmologists nationwide. Essler is proposing to invest a total capital expenditure of approximately $24,200,000, which includes $20,900,000 in machinery and equipment and $3,300,000 in leasehold improvements to create a new state-of-the-art lens processing facility. The proposed lens processing facility will be co-located within Essler's existing distribution center located at 2400 Spiegel Drive. Additionally, Essler proposes to create 118 net new full-time permanent positions with an annual payroll of approximately $4,518,530 and retain 342 full-time positions with an annual payroll of approximately $12,465,890 at the proposed project site. Jerry D., the floor is yours.
Thank you. On behalf of Essler of America Incorporated and Essler Laboratories of America, I would like to personally thank the City of Columbus, the Department of Development, and City Council for approving the Columbus Job Creation Tax Credit. This offer of initiatives from the City of Columbus and Jobs, Ohio, were important factors in deciding to invest here in Columbus over alternative locations. Essler, as he stated, is worldwide manufacturer and distributor of eyewear lenses with culture focused on inventing new technologies and products and raising the awareness of importance of good vision and our mission of improving lives by improving sight. And we believe that everyone deserves to see life in all its detail with the best vision possible. Our project includes the expansion of our existing distribution center located in Groveport to include a brand-new state-of-the-art lens processing facility. We're investing in more than environmentally friendly processes for both surfacing and cutting of the optics into our optical lenses with installing the latest technologies in coating and edging equipment. We're very excited to announce that the 342 jobs that will be retained and adding 118 new full-time jobs being created as part of this project. Employees will receive advanced technical and skills-based training that will set them up for success at Essler. We are investing approximately $24.2 million in this project. It includes leasehold improvements, state-of-the-art machinery, equipment, technology, and most importantly, training for our employees. We are thrilled to collaborate with the City of Columbus on this exciting endeavor, and we truly believe this project is mutually beneficial for our company as well as the City of Columbus.
Thank you very much, Jerry D. Director, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council. I think this is another great example as we continue to make strategic investments in job growth and infrastructure around our community. We've seen that we're competing with the likes of Baltimore and Los Angeles to win jobs and win investment. So, I thank you for your consideration and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. Thank you very much, Jerry D. We appreciate it. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I would move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
May I please move on to the Environment Committee? Thank you very much. Tonight, I have ordinance number 2898-2019 to authorize the Director of Department of Development — oops, never mind. Let me keep moving here. Wrong. Tonight, I have ordinance number 2680-2019 to authorize the Director of Public Service to modify and increase an existing contract with Recollect Systems to waive competitive bidding requirements of City Code Chapter 329, to authorize the expenditure of up to $14,661 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $14,661 from the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. In November 2013, the Department of Public Service entered into a three-year contract with Recollect to provide the city with an online platform through which the city can communicate information concerning its refuse, recycling, and yard waste programs to residents. The aforementioned application included features allowing users to perform, excuse me, address searches to determine designated collection dates and to receive service alerts and collection day reminders via telephone and email. The purpose of this legislation is to provide for the continuation of services through December 31st, 2020. I'd like to ask Assistant Director Skakow if you have any comments about why we're waiving the competitive bidding on this.
President Harden, Chair Remy, members of council, Recollect is a valuable resource for our residents, allowing them to receive communications concerning refuse, recycling, yard waste, and our sweeping program. With your approval, we look forward to continuing this service for another year. We are asking the bid waiver to continue this service due to it being a proprietary software. That said, the decision has been made to make this our last year to ask for the waiver as we plan to open this procurement process up to vendors next year that may be able to offer a similar type of software. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Director Skakow, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you very much. That's all I have tonight, my committees.
The final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance number — I've gotten ahead of myself. Ordinance number 3025-2019 is to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $400,000 of the anticipated FY 2020 Emergency Solutions Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Development, for the Department of Development, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a contract with Community Shelter Board for the administration of the city emergency solutions grant monies and to declare an emergency. ESG provides funding for, for the purpose of preventing homelessness and providing emergency shelter and can include and encourage initiatives of rapid rehousing and stabilization for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. Additionally, this grant can be used to support the community's homeless management information system to guarantee that the community's plan to end homelessness is based on the most applicable and current homeless data available. Funds will be used to meet the housing needs identified by the consolidated plan submitted to HUD. The Community Shelter Board, a nonprofit organization, has been selected because of their history with the city and the homeless their history with the city and the homeless service population, and the funding and coordination to homeless individuals and their families, as well as their established administrative procedures to effectively and efficiently implement such services. And again, this grant has normally been $550,000, but we want to pass it today. This amount fluctuates each year, and once we get the notification from the federal government, which is usually around mid-year, there could be additional dollars to support our homeless community. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Seeing no further business coming forward this council, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adjourn. A regular meeting number 58 will now come to order. The clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal?
Go move.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the Zoning Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertains to speaking for council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, please answer. I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 2899-2019 to rezone 2281 Kenny Road, being 251.1 acres located at the northwest corner of Kenny Road and Camear Road, from LUCRPD Limited University College Research Park District and M2 Manufacturing District to LUCRPD Limited University College Research Park District. The applicant is the Ohio State University Physical Planning and Real Estate Care of Jeffrey L. Brown, Attorney. The proposed use is a university-related development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there's no area commission. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2907-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3374.02 permitted uses and 3374.03 special permit uses of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 2281 Kenny Road to permit limited commercial development in the LUCRPD Limited University College Research Park District. The applicant is the Ohio State University Physical Planning and Real Estate Care of Jeffrey L. Brown, Attorney. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and there is no area commission. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row. An ordinance 2903.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2968-2019 to grant a variance from provisions of Sections 3332.035 R3 Residential District, 3332.05 Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.13 R3 Area District Requirements, 3332.27 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 1432 East Rich Street, to permit two single-unit dwellings on one lot with a reduced development standards in the R3 Residential District. The applicant is Principal Homes, Care of Agent David Perry. The proposed use is a single-unit residential development... Single unit, I'm sorry. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Area Commission's recommendation is approval 9 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2972-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.039 R4 Residential District, 3312.49 Minimum Numbers of Parking Spaces Required, 3325.801 Maximum Lot Coverage, 3325.805 Maximum Floor Area Ratio, 3332.05 Area District Lot With Requirements, 3332.15 R4 Area District Requirements, 3332.19 Fronting, 3332.27 Rear Yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1400 North Fifth Street, to permit two single-unit dwellings on one lot with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant is John Neil Lindsay. Proposed use is two single-unit dwellings on one lot. The area... The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the University Area Commission's recommendation is approval 12 to 2. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That concludes the zoning agenda this evening. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Have a happy Thanksgiving. We will reconvene December 9th. Seeing no further business to come before council, may I get a motion to adjourn? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.